Everything is shut up.
I haven't seen him. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Because you said three and I think it's four. Oh, yeah, this one is great. Branyana. That was my last one.
Okay.
I like the one with that.
Maybe I have?
I'll give you right now.
Well, I have to say.
I'm sure he's a good one.
He's fourth.
Oh, gosh, he's so important.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Yeah.
He's fourth.
He's fourth. Oh, gosh, he's so important.
Gotcha.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, they had that work. Worked very, very well. I could have been losing somebody else.
Thank you. Now.
I feel you.
Yeah.
Right there.
It's just that it's not. It's ready. It's not.
I think it's.
We have.
It's not. 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 It's not.
Are you doing well?
Hanging in there. As I was. She did.
My glass is cold.
I'm gonna slide back here real quick. Well, I can. Okay. Hey, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started here, so if you want to find a seat, if you don't have a seat yet, folks are getting situated. I'm Karen Olschleger. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters here in Asheville, Buncombe County. I want to thank all of y'all for coming. So just in case anyone's in the wrong place, this is our District One County Commission Forum this evening. I want to thank everybody for coming. How many of y'all have been to a league forum before? Show of hands. Any first timers here tonight? Anyone? Excellent. Excellent. Well, if you've been to league forums before, if you like what we do, we are a nonpartisan organization, you know, devoted to, you know, informed active participation in local government. If you like what we do, please consider joining the league. We're open to men, women, all ages, not just for women. Popular misconception there. So we've got membership forums back on the back table. Feel free to join there. Or if you're not quite sure, you can also just sign up for our email list, maybe feel it out and take your time, but stay informed that way as well. Also, feel free to take some free stuff on your way out. We've got League of Women Voters pens, P-E-N and P-I-N as well. But anyway, I'll stop promoting league merchandise now, but please take some, get informed. I'll move on to introducing our wonderful moderator now. Jerry Jameson's going to be moderating all of our forums this fall. So Jerry Jameson's been in Asheville since 1998. She relocated here from South Florida, and she quickly immersed herself in the community, having served on the Asheville Civic Center Commission, the Buncombe County Women's Commission, and the Bell Share Board. So she started with Clear Channel Asheville in 2002, and she has served as the news director for its cluster of stations, as well as host of The Morning Report on 570 WWNC. Also want to take a second to thank all of our wonderful co-sponsors. 880 The Revolution, News Radio 570, Carolina Public Press, Angie back there, Mountain Express, and The Urban News. So thanks all those folks, and here comes Jerry Jameson.
A little bit of housekeeping before we get started. It's good to see so many folks here. For District One, you're in the right place, correct? By chance, if you don't know what district you're in, since the lines have been redrawn, the boundaries have been redrawn, you can go to vote411.org. It's one of the Asheville Buncombe League of Women Voters' support websites with all the information, polling locations and all that stuff. Vote411.org. I'll ask you now, if you would, please turn off your cell phones. We are streaming this live, and then it will be available after on websites as well, so we don't want phones going off and we don't want to be disruptive to our candidates. Restrooms, right outside the door, you can't miss them. Also want to urge everybody, if you haven't taken a stroll through the beautifully renovated library, which was a Buncombe County Commission county endeavor, please do at some point. It's, you know, I miss the libraries of old, and this is a great resource here. Lots of things you probably don't even know are available. Susan Fisher was scheduled to be here this evening. She did have a last-minute conflict. She sends her regrets. She really did want to be here, and of course, she is running unopposed this election. Karen already mentioned the sponsors, but I'm going to go ahead and mention them once more because you can never get that enough when you've got people pushing public participation like this. There's 880 The Revolution, News Radio 570, WWNC, Carolina Public Press, The Urban News, and The Mountain Express. Now, if you did miss last week's forum, last week we were at, I don't even remember where we were. I get lost. AB Tech, that's right. At the Ferguson Auditorium. I remember what it was for, though. It was the County Commission Chair and the Board of Education. We also had Soil and Water District meet and greets, and Senate District, Tom Appadaca and Martin Esbit were not there to join us. R.L. Clark was there for meet and greet to take some questions. If you missed that, though, you can go to carolinapublicpress.org for the chair forum is posted now. The Board of Education forum will be posted at a future time, as will both be posted at the ablvv.org website. Asheville Buncombe League of Women Voters will be posting at a later date as well, all of the forums. So that's carolinapublicpress.org or ablvv.org. Lastly, before we get started with our candidates, the school board, the Buncombe County Board of Education election, a little confusing for those who are not familiar with it. So I just want to let you know that right now, we have three districts and one at-large seat that you will cast a vote for if you are a county resident, not a city resident. City residents will not vote on the County Board of Education. So three districts and one at-large. There are three other districts that will roll over in two more years. The three that are currently are Owen, Robertson, North Buncombe, and one at-large. When you go to cast a ballot, whether you go early voting or in November 6th, you vote for one in each district, plus you vote for one at the at-large. I want to remind you as well, many, many races, if you cast a straight party ticket, will not cast Board of Education as one, Soil and Water District, the president, judicial races, things like that. So if you have any questions, again, if you go to thevote411.org, it'll take you to all kinds of support resource information that you might find important. I want to introduce our candidates right now and tell you a little bit about how we're going to run this. Candidates will each have two minutes to introduce yourselves. Then we will begin with the questions, which have been submitted by audience members already. You'll have one minute to answer the question, and then, at my discretion, we may have a 30-second expansion. I may ask for you to expand a little further, or rebuttal, or response. So if you have a question, we do have quite a few already, but if you have a question that you want to ask, raise your hand. If you do not have a card, we'll get a card to you, and then when you complete it, raise your hand, and we'll have some people picking them up and bringing them to me. I will say, if I don't get to your question, don't take it personally. It may have been combined or grouped with a similar topic or like topic, or we may just run out of time. But don't hesitate to, again, raise your hand if you want a question or not. So, Mr. Gooch, we'll start with you with a one-minute, rather, two-minute introduction, please.
My name's Don Gooch.
My name's Don Gooch. I live over in the Emma area, here in Bunkham County. I'm the lead detective at Woodford Police Department. I've been in law enforcement for over 22 years. Was raised in law enforcement. My father was law enforcement. My uncle was law enforcement. I have a Bachelor of Science degree from Clemson University in marketing of all things, really plays well in law enforcement. I have a Master's degree in public affairs when it says in criminal justice from Western Carolina University. I'm also, I serve proudly with a little organization most of y'all ought to be aware of called the United States Army. I am a Gulf War veteran. I was a combat engineer and served proudly overseas during that conflict. Top of that, I also own a small business. I've owned a business for 12 and a half, going on 13 years, that we have on the property has turned into a very successful business. That involves, it's a gun business. I'm not gonna make no secret in it. We teach firearms. We teach a lot of people how to shoot. We do the carrying concealed handgun classes. And we've been very proud of the successes we've had with some of our female academies in teaching confidence to them, giving them the ability to be able to not be afraid, to empower them, and not be afraid of what we deal with in society. That's a little bit about me. I am married. My wife's barb is in the back of the room. I am a father and a grandfather. I have four children and three grandbabies and a two-year-old that gives me nightmares. And if you can't tell from my accent, I am from the mountains of North Carolina. I had a college professor one time beg me to get rid of my accent. He said it didn't make me sound professional, and I pretty well stuck to my guns, no pun intended. So, thank everyone for being here tonight.
I had to get rid of my accent.
I would.
Holly Jones, please.
Thank you. Well, hi, my name is Holly Jones, and I'm running to be one of your two representatives from District One on the County Commission. I became a resident of Bunkham County about 16 years ago, and I came to this community to, for a job opportunity, to be Executive Director of the YWCA of Asheville, and held that job for about 16 years. The mission of the YWCA is the empowerment of women and the elimination of racism. And those issues of social justice is what also, not only pulled me into that professional career here in the county, but also got me interested in elected office as well. Since coming on the local government scene a few years back, I've been, I think, a consistent clear voice for issues of equity. I have a Master's of Public Health and a Master's of Divinity, and I studied public policy in undergraduate from Carolina. My husband is a retired small businessman and educator. I have a fifth-grade daughter at Isaac Dixon, one of the great public schools here in our county. In fact, my whole family's very grounded in public education. My mom was a teacher for 30 years, and my brother is still teaches in one of the poorest school districts in North Carolina, down in Enston County. I've been privileged to serve on a couple of different boards, the Asheville City Council as well as the Bunkham County Commission. I've been, ooh, 30 seconds. I wanted to just tell you, if I'm re-elected, that I'll be pretty much what you've seen is what you will get going forward. I will continue to do my homework. I will listen and learn from my constituents. I will speak my voice and push the envelope and vote my conscience, and I'll fight for Bunkham County for what is right. Serving in elected office is, been an honor, and every day, I try to treat people with kindness and respect, and that's how I'll go forward, and I appreciate your vote.
All right. Mr. Newman.
Thanks, Jerry, and thanks to the League of Women Voters and all the other organizations that are sponsoring the event tonight. It's great to be here. My name is Brownie Newman, and I believe this is the first forum that has been held for candidates since, you know, Holly and I had a primary election. I guess there wasn't a primary on the other, on the Republican side, so things are pretty busy leading up to May, but it's been pretty quiet since then. So it's great that events like this are being held to really start getting the community focused on this election. So I appreciate the chance to be here. My wife and I live not far from here, in the Monford neighborhood, just north of downtown. We have two children who are in the public schools here in Asheville at Isaac Dixon Elementary. I grew up, I didn't grow up in Asheville, but I grew up not far from here, down in Pickens County. All of the members of my family went to Clemson University before me, so love the Tigers. I actually moved to Asheville to go to college myself, at Warren Wilson College, and came here and really loved Asheville and Bunkham County, and stuck around. I was fortunate to serve two terms on the Asheville City Council as well. I appreciate everyone who supported me in my efforts to get elected on City Council and helped educate me about the issues that people cared about and were interested in during the time I served on City Council. It was a real, it was a real honor, and really affirmed to me that, that local government is a place where, where people can come together and really make a difference. So with that in mind, I decided to run for County Commission. There's a lot of different issues I'm interested in on the County Commission, from helping to create more living wage jobs in Bunkham County, helping to strengthen our schools, and to, to support Bunkham County becoming more of a leader for clean energy and energy independence, which is a real, a real passion of mine. So thanks again for the opportunity to be here. I look forward to talking about some of the issues.
All right. We're gonna jump right in, then. And, Mr. Newman, since you mentioned jobs, we'll go ahead and start with you. What can you do to generate business opportunities for Bunkham County? How can we create those?
Sure. Well, I think that, you know, it's, you know, we've, obviously, our country's been going through a, one of the most severe recessions in a long, long time, over the last several years, and that's impacted all communities across the country. Ours is no exception. But I think this is an area where we have seen some real success. I think the city and the county have worked together effectively to bring good-paying jobs to, to our community. Bunkham County now has one of the lowest unemployment rates in North Carolina. We've seen a real rebound in manufacturing jobs, bucking the trends that most of the country is looking at with, you know, companies like Linamar and New Belgium coming to Asheville. These were tough economic development projects that we competed hard for against communities across the country, and we won. So I think we have success to build on. Some of the other things that we're doing to support small businesses that are successful are programs such as partnering with Mountain Bizworks, which gives training opportunities for people who want to start their own business, and providing aspiring entrepreneurs with capital to start up new businesses, and I think that's another success we can build on.
All right, thank you. Ms. Jones.
To piggyback on some of the points that were just previously made, I do think that part of our recent success has been that a lot of players have been on the same page. The Economic Development Coalition, the Advantage West, as well as local governments have come together and put their turf aside, and as one of the more recent new economic development prospects said, "When we came to Bunkham County, y'all rolled out the red carpet instead of the red tape." So I think that's part of what we want to continue to be, is be a united force. And also, I think one of the important things that local government can do is to continue to invest in the quality of life things and our workforce, too, because having a strong workforce is something that's important for the county commissioners to invest in, and that's been part of how we've drawn jobs here recently. Thank you.
Mr. Gooch.
Going with the same, same tone here is, I definitely believe in, in industry coming back into the area. North Carolina was known for years from the furniture manufacturing arenas, bringing back plants such as, you know, something similar to the beacon-style plants, to where we can not only meet the needs, you know, we are, we are adding to our education base here with the advancements at Abtech and their support of, of the, the government and the programs that we're trying to implement and working with us to, to bring in the right type of education. But we also got to understand that we have a lot of people in this county that, that do not necessarily have certain educational skills, but through a, an industrial setting, can definitely make living wages far beyond what a tourist rate, wage would be.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gooch. What areas or departments or services do you think could be jointly administered by the City of Asheville and the county in order to achieve economies of scale and/or efficiency? We'll start with you, Holly.
Sure. This is, this is always a popular question. I would, and, and the answers unfortunately keep on coming up because we haven't done, we haven't done a lot about this. So I would say that one of the areas that we could look closely at continues to be areas around kind of our parks and recreation, and, I mean, not all facets of it, but I think there's some areas, there's some arenas of Parks and Rec that serve the entire county, and we could, we could be smarter about that. I think purchasing is another area that we could combine for greater efficiencies. Those, those are the two that come, that are top of mind.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gooch.
The, one I would concentrate probably most on would be the educational system that we have in Bunkham County. We have two different school systems, the Asheville School System and the Bunkham School System. They, they have their own administrative staffs. We have kids that live within the confines of the Asheville city limits, but are traveling to Reynolds to, to go to school. I think we're doubling up certain services. We're extending bus travel times, and definitely for the higher-paying administrative jobs, there's aspects that can be combined and have a unified school system in this county.
Sure. I mean, I think there's probably a lot of opportunities out there ultimately for things that could be integrated or better coordinated, you know, ranging from, you know, educational opportunities even to law enforcement, to planning. The city has a planning department, the county has a planning department. I think all of these are areas that could benefit from, from coordination or even, even integration in the long run. But, you know, when we talk about city and county relationships, and these are hard issues, I mean, the way things have been done in the past is, there's a reason for it, and there's patterns of behavior, and there's turf. I mean, none of these are easy. I would tend to agree with Holly that one of the most significant departments that are probably from a practical standpoint, where some sort of real, real integration is possible and would make a big difference probably is Parks and Recreation, because a lot of these are facilities that are broadly used by people from throughout Bunkham County, but in a lot of cases, they're funded almost exclusively on the, on the shoulders of taxpayers in Asheville. So I think there's an equity question there, and, and there's, there's a case to be made that everybody in Bunkham County who uses them should help pay for them in the long run.
All right, Mr. Gooch, we'll start with you on this. $40 million voted to fund a greenway. Where are these funds coming from? If a bond issue, who is the lead underwriter that would provide this kind of money for 10 to 20 years at 1% to 2%?
I am all for greenways, but I definitely feel that monies can be spent in other avenues. We're talking about consolidation here. We're talking about, had a conversation with someone here, you know, about the homeless and the hungry in this county. I am for the greenways. I do question spending $40 million, a taxpayer money, when we have much more pressing issues on the table at this time.
All right, thank you. Mr. Newman?
Sure.
We'll come back around to you.
I'm sorry, I see what you're doing.
I'm looping around.
Yeah, that's fair.
Sure. So, so I'm a big fan of greenways. FLS Energy, who I work for, our office has used to be located on Amboy Road, and we're now in the River Arch District, so we're near a lot of the greenways that have been built along the French Broad River. I see, they are used by thousands of people every day, and my kids love going out there on days where the weather is nice or even not so nice. It is amazing how heavily utilized these facilities are. I think it's actually one of those types of infrastructure that for a relatively, in, in the big scheme of things, when we look at the county budget, for a relatively small investment, in the big scheme of things, the impact that implementing the greenways plan that has been developed with very broad and enthusiastic support from citizens in Bunkham County, there's very few things that will have as high of an impact on quality of life and economic development. I mean, when New Belgium came here and decided to invest $100 million in our riverfront that people have been talking about for decades, and no one's done it, they're doing it, they specifically cited greenways as one of the main reasons they came here. So I think there's a real economic development component to that.
Mr. Newman, thank you very much. And a related question, would you support the use of eminent domain to acquire property for greenways? Ms. Jones?
Uh, no. But, can I also answer that other one, too? So, about the funding?
We'll go ahead and give you each 30 seconds.
Did I already answer that one? No, okay. Oh, no, I just...
Oh, did I skip you? I apologize. Thank you very much. Putting me in my place.
Yeah, that's fine, too. I just was having a mo, I really checked out if I answered it, but, um...
You remember the question?
So... I, I also, because I also wanted to clarify that the, the funding was not voted on. What was voted on at this point is the, was the plan, and I think the funding is, is, is forthcoming, and I believe that there's a vision within the volunteers, as well as the staff that have put the plan together, to really find ways that we can bring not just public dollars to bear, but also private dollars and really leverage some other opportunities there. So I do believe that, that Greenway's merits, public investment, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't have voted for a $40 million plan, and that's not what happened. So, so in terms of the eminent domain, I, we clarified that in the plan, too, and made it very succinct that we, that is not an option for the county commissioners going forward. At least, that's what we called out into the plan, and, so...
Mr. Gooch, would you support the use of eminent domain to acquire property for greenways?
No, in, in no way. I also wouldn't support any coercion of any form or fashion. If, if, if it's strictly voluntary and someone supports this, I am all for that support. But eminent domain for this project definitely does not classify into the, to the grounds that I think eminent domain was initially created.
Mr. Newman?
So I think that, you know, from the greenway development that we've seen in Asheville over the last several years, I mean, there's been very strong support among landowners. We've seen lots of landowners even donate property and donate easements for, for parks and greenways. Anytime, I mean, I think it's important to remember that anytime property needs to be acquired for any public purpose, if it's a public park, if it's a road, if it's a sewer line, a water line, a utility line, there's a legal and ethical requirement from government to fully compensate property owners for the fair market value of their property, and I would certainly never support anything other than, than that. I guess that, you know, the one thing I would point out is that I think that, that acquisition of property for a public purpose, if they have gone through every effort to negotiate a fair market value transaction, and it cannot be transacted, the public does need to reserve the right to acquire property through eminent domain for schools and roads, water lines, sewer lines. This is done every day, and I would not say that the public...
All right, Mr. Newman. I apologize, but your time is up.
In some cases, I would not take that off the table, if it's done under fair market value.
Thank you very much, Mr. Newman. Thank you. Want to remind you, if you have a question and you need a card to write it out, just raise your hand, we'll get you a card, or if you have a question and you've already written it out, or once you do, raise the card again, and we will pick it up. All right, we will start with you, Ms. Jones. How would you change or add to the regulations on building of slopes, or is no change needed?
Well, we adopted maybe three years ago, a very strong, thorough, actually, I'm not sure if it's three years ago, anyway, I definitely was supportive of it whenever it happened, but a very thoroughly researched, deep-stroke ordinance, and I think we've got a good one. So I don't, I've not heard of any problems to date. I feel like it's, it's, it's serving us well. My caveat around that is, though, because building has really slowed in these last few years, there might be some unintended consequences that we just haven't experienced yet, just because of this lull in development that's come about. So at this point, I think it's serving, it's serving us as it needs to.
All right, Mr. Gooch.
Yeah, the slope, I wish it had been acted along before, as far as the steep slope development, something that we kind of got, you know, a long time ago. So being able to protect what we have, you know, in place at this time, I think would definitely be a priority. And, you know, like Ms. Jones has said, we, development has slowed down, is still going on, but it has definitely slowed down, and it's not really been as big an issue on the table at, at this time, could be in the future.
Mr. Newman?
And I do not have any specific, you know, suggestions for modifying it at this time. I tend to agree with the comments that were made already, that some important steps were taken, and I'm sure all these ordinances can probably be improved to make them more user-friendly and effective, but I don't have any specific suggestions at this time.
All right. We will start then with Mr. Gooch. As Bunkham's, Bunkham County's population ages, what should be the county's role in assisting with increasing transportation needs?
We have got to start looking after more of our, our aging population in, in terms of, we do have services that are currently in play. I think we ought to expand those services, but I think there are still some people falling through the cracks, because they are not aware of all the services. I think we need to even go beyond what we're doing now, get even more of the churches, more of the outlying areas into play with this. Not everybody can rely on families to take care of certain things, and I think that's, you know, for people that's worked their entire lives, they have, they have gotten to a point, and I think we do as a society have a responsibility to try to afford them every avenue that we can, and even with the services that we have.
Mr. Newman?
Sure. You know... Sure. You know, this is probably another arena, when we, the question came up earlier about areas the city and the county can work together on, this is probably another area that upon reflection would be a good one to focus on. You know, the city runs, I think the city runs a very, a very good community transit system for a city of our size. And there's a lot of interest in it. There's been a whole, you know, improved plan developed and parts of that are being implemented. But particularly, you know, stronger partnerships between the city and the county, I think would allow more of that to happen sooner. I mean, we need, we need transit to run on Sundays and not just, you know, six days out of the week. Particularly if there can be targeted improvements made that would help people who live around the edges of the urbanized area, who need, who work in the city to be able to better serve them. I think those, I think partnering on targeted improvements to the existing transit system between the city and the county is probably an area that would be the best focus.
Ms. Jones?
Great points are being made by everyone at this table. But I think the things that I would add to this conversation, in addition to trying to improve the actual transportation services, I think there is, it's important value to think about where appropriate and where cost efficient, effective to bring the services closer to some of the seniors out in the county too. And we've made some efforts around this with some outposts. So I think that's another way that we can, we can serve our aging population. And I think in the future, we also want to think about where we're developing too. So I think to really incentivize our developments on transportation routes where, when the partnerships improve and the ones that we have, that seniors actually can easily access the mountain mobility and other public transportation.
All right. Mr. Newman, this is specifically for you. Please explain the reasons your company was given the contract for the solar panels at the INCA school and was this appropriate for a city council member?
Sure. So the Buncombe County School Board, when they were making improvements at INCA, they decided to, as part of the re-roofing of the school, they decided that they would like to have a solar energy system on the school. They went through a public request for proposals that was open to any companies that wanted to do that. Our company submitted a proposal. I'm not aware if other companies did or not, but it was an open process. We submitted a proposal. They selected our company to develop the project. So I think it was appropriate. We followed, you know, all of, it was very transparent. It was very open to anybody who wanted to do it. As a city council member, I would be prohibited by state law from doing any business with the city of Asheville. If I'm elected to the Buncombe County Commission, that same provision would prevent my company from doing any business with Buncombe County. So in the future, if I am elected, that would be, that would not be appropriate or even permissible. But in the past, I was not even a candidate for Buncombe County when the schools, when the INCA decided to solicit proposals from the community.
All right, thank you, Mr. Newman. We'll start with you on this question. Again, Mr. Newman, would you certify a TV channel for public access TV?
Would I certify a channel? Perhaps. I would need more information about what all that might, that particular proposal might-
Funding and things like that, right.
Might encompass.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
Uh, yeah, once again, kind of hard to get your head around what the, what the intent of the question is. There's been a very painful conversation around our public T, our public access. I think that might be where part of it's coming from lately. So we would definitely need to, before re-entering that, understand our revenue streams and really get our business plan together prior to committing to that, yes.
Mr. Gooch?
Yeah, same premise is basically looking back at it, funding, you know, what, everything that's in play. I would love to have it, but you know, all things considered, and again, that'd be something we'd have to sit down and look at in its totality.
All right. Ms. Jones, we'll start with you. Explain the roles of county government and county business in creating education appropriate for the 21st century and what funding would be needed.
Okay, there was a lot there. So the role of county government for-
The role of county government in creating appropriate education for the 21st century jobs?
First thing I want to say is that the county commissioners have very tight requirements of how much they can wade into the development of educational policy. That's what we've got school boards for and we are, we are limited by statute about even how the monies that we allocate can, there's not a lot we can say about it frankly. So I would assume, and that carries forward, we have a little bit more say around working with AB Tech. So it's, I'm kind of floundering here a little bit because of the statutes that I feel like we've been required to be under. I think always the conversations that happen between the city school board and the county school boards are important because we can talk about the workforce needs that we see in economic development recruitment. And I'm currently serving on the STEM project for the county schools and that, I think that's a future area we need to focus more on.
Just to clarify, STEM, you mean science, technology?
Engineering and math.
Engineering and math, okay. Mr. Gooch?
Same premise, you know, looking at just, if it's nothing more than, as like Ms. Jones was saying, as far as what statute of limitations come into play. But at the same time, we, you know, definitely continue to support, that support, our primary involvement, I think, has been, you know, with the tax increase involving AB Tech. I have taught at AB Tech for a long time in the criminal justice program and in the law enforcement program. And it is definitely one of the pinnacles of the state. AB Tech's one of only two community colleges in state North Carolina allowed to train SBI agents and the police academy. And that's just one example of the excellence that we just continue to support and as we're looking into the 21st, or looking to years to come.
Thank you. Mr. Newman?
Just a couple of things I'd like to specifically talk about in terms of education. One is, you know, the county is responsible for capital improvements on the, on the public schools. I want to really applaud the county commission we have today in terms of giving particular attention to some of the public schools in Asheville that are badly in need of attention, particularly Asheville Middle School is really badly in need of improvements. A lot that have gone overlooked for far too long. And so I think the county commissioners are a lot of thanks for that, Holly in particular. The other thing is, I think we just need to be willing to try new things. I would, this is not on the county commission's plate right now, but this, I applaud the city school board for being willing to look at things like the different 12-month calendar for schools in terms of reducing the dropout rate and improving, lowering the achievement gap in schools. I don't know if that's the right thing to do or not, but I applaud their willingness and the courage to really look at out-of-the-box ideas that have not been tried before. Because we've got to reduce the dropout rate, we've got to get more of our kids, we've got a great school system, but it needs to work for all of our kids.
All right. A 30-second follow-up for each of you. We'll start with you, Ms. Jones. Workforce needs, what would you identify as the top workforce needs for Buncombe County?
Um, I would think that the, well, I, the non-traditional arenas that are delivering on a higher wage, I think to try to move people in that direction, I think that's the way to go. I mean, particularly around women, I believe that's, that's an important avenue to follow through on.
Can you repeat that one more time?
What would you identify as the top workforce needs for Buncombe County?
Well, I think it goes in, you know, given the jobs that we want to bring into the area. But I think we also, you know, really concentrate on some of the basic skills. In my line of work, I come across a lot of different types of people, different levels of education. And trying to bring everyone up to a successful level to where they have a chance for most of the jobs that we do have in the area. And then just continue the aspects that, training and working with not only AB Tech but-
All right.
Other companies.
Mr. Gooch, thank you. Mr. Newman?
Sure. I mean, just one other thing I would touch on is that in my opening remarks, I mentioned Mountain Bizworks and the, you know, we're really a community of small businesses. We're dominated by small businesses. And I think helping more people who have an idea for starting their own business pursue that is probably the most effective investment we have for creating jobs in the community. And Mountain Bizworks has done a great job helping people go through a training program to start a business, giving them some of the tough startup capital to start their own business. And I think those investments have paid off many times. And I think, I think more investments there to start, for people to help start their own business is a great, a great place to focus.
Thank you. Mr. Gooch?
Yes? Can we do one of those little follow-up things?
We'll give you each 30, we'll give you each 30 seconds. Keep it to workforce development.
I mean, I think, I think the most important thing is to ask the workforce what they need. And I'm not, and I think what they need are jobs at the end of the day. And that might sound trite, but it's kind of, it sounds, it feels very academic for me to come up with an, you know, an educational plan for folks who are looking for jobs. I mean, what they need for first and foremost are opportunities to be hired. So that's-
Mr. Gooch, would you like to add anything?
Well, it's just, it's the same, the same premise as far as bringing people up to a standard that they, they have that chance to compete in a job market, a competitive job market. And though unemployment in this area is better than, you know, is not as bad as what is in other areas, we still have people that's out of work. And just working on that and continuing that goal on bringing them to that level.
All right. Mr. Newman, would you like to add anything further?
I'm good.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Gooch, please explain your understanding of the economic impacts of sustainability. Be as specific as possible in describing sustainability, its indicators, and our ability to plan and create sustainability.
As in terms of our workforce, our work area?
No, this is a completely different question. So this is sustainability in the big picture.
Well, one, you know, and if I'm reading the question, if I understand the question right, one of the things that I look at in sustainability, you know, as the government as a whole, as the county as a whole, I think we need to reduce, you know, the debt that we have as a county. I need, I think that there are a lot of positive aspects in certain ratings. I think that we need to be a solvent county. We need to be able to stand without relying on loans, funding, that kind of aspect. I think that's going to be one of the key aspects to sustaining everything in the county and make sure we spend the money wisely, the taxpayer money. And, you know, the understanding that grants and when we receive grants from the government, that is still taxpayer money. It is just being paid through from, to a different entity. And we're just getting it back and it's still being spent.
Mr. Newman?
It's a pretty broad question. I'm not clear if it's meant to focus on more environmental sustainability or physical management. So I'm not sure what the intent of the person or the question is. But, I mean, I'll just say from, from an environmental sustainability standpoint, I think those are issues that people in Buncombe County care a lot about. I think that one of the areas that I would like to really focus on as a county commissioner is around energy sustainability and Buncombe County becoming a national leader around clean energy and energy independence. One of the things I was very proud to be part of on city council was our commitment to reduce our energy use and carbon footprint by 80%. And the council adopted a policy to do that. And as a result, we've already reduced our energy use by more than 10%. We have a very specific plan to reduce it another 20% in just the next four years. And in addition to the environmental benefits, we're saving taxpayers, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year on our utility expenses. So that's, that's one place where we really decided to provide leadership on sustainability. And I'd like, and the county's doing a lot of good stuff there too, and I'd like to help that.
All right. Ms. Jones?
Um, just recently, I think in the spring, we, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners adopted our sustainability plan. And it's got, I think, five, maybe 10 different arenas that there, there are these indicators in. And I wouldn't begin to begin to tell you what all of them are. A couple that I did want, would want to highlight have to do with development and how we decide to, what, how we decide to build. And I'm a proponent of building, you know, up, not out, and on the transportation corridors. I think that has, that's really key to our sustainability as a community. I also think another thing that's really exciting within the plan is this focus on local food. That is becoming more and more of an economic driver. And obviously, it's a way we can care for ourselves and feed ourselves too. So I would kind of throw those two in the mix with the economic sustainability and, and energy conservation.
All right, thank you. Mr. Newman, we'll start with you. Are there specific areas of the budget where you think there might be savings and why?
Sure. You know, having not gone through a budget cycle yet, looking forward to participating in that project, in that, in that process. I mean, this is not, this is not a big-ticket item in the big scheme of things, but I do think that it's a symbolically important area. I think that the decision the commissioners made to reduce their, to reduce their own compensation was the right thing to do, to make it more consistent with what local elected officials in county government are paid around the state. I specifically supported Holly's proposal to further reduce it, to really make it more in line with what I think most people in our community would think is reasonable for compensating our local elected officials for. So I disagreed with the decision of the majority of the commission not to support that motion. I will support that if I'm elected to the county commission.
All right. Ms. Jones?
I have been very vocal about trying to really delve into the budget and understand, you know, where are arenas that we might could find savings. And I believe that's a partnership with staff to kind of come up with these opportunities to find efficiencies. And our staff's done a great job. They have, they've identified systems that will streamline our client services as well as make the services better and more humane for our clients. For example, our decision to close our primary care as we knew it with the Buncombe County Health Department is, has really, we've been able to use that money and double almost the number of folks that we've been able to serve. So that's not a direct dollar savings, but in fact, it's, you know, it's a double efficiency of those dollars. So I think that's, those are the types of innovations that I would want to continue to work to find.
All right, Mr. Gooch?
Right now, we, I believe our county work staff is probably the lowest it's been in years as far as the number of county employees that we have. We definitely, I know it's been in the news, the high rate of salary for some of the upper echelon people. And I think that's definitely something that can be looked at. But at the same time, we definitely need to protect the workforce that we've got that's in play. I think it's more of going line by line, looking exactly where the monies are being spent as opposed to looking like, like Mr. Newman said, a big-ticket item. I don't think that's necessarily there because they've been many years of streamlining due to budgets and due to economies and the like. So I think it's just breaking down where the dollars are going with the staff, with the commission. You know, I definitely support the reduction of the salary too, making it in line with the rest of the state. I don't, I don't see any problems with that. Basically, you got to start with your leadership and go from there.
All right, thank you. Ms. Jones, we'll start with you. Childhood obesity rates in North Carolina as well as the nation alarming. What role, if any, does Buncombe County government play in addressing this?
Oh, I think they have a lot of, there's a lot of ways. I think first and foremost, to continue to invest in these infrastructures that we know will facilitate movement. I think, we talked about conversations with the schools before around education. I think this is a really important one that we have with our public health officials with the education and how we're working with children to encourage also not only movement but, but good eating. And there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of successes that we've had along the way too. I think the way that we've promoted our local food production is also a piece of the picture too. There's, there, this is, this is one of my passions, so it's going to be hard to see that stop sign come up.
30 seconds.
But, but anyway, I think, I think it's, it's a vital thing for, with education as well as infrastructure development.
Well, you did well there, see, Mr. Gooch.
Basically, on the, on the obesity, obesity issue is, is basically we're going into the schools and putting it part of the educational process. I am a proponent of definitely the right foods for, especially with developing children, but also the right mentality. I think society as a whole, we have an issue with children playing video games all the time and not outside like it was when I was a kid, running through the woods for 12 straight hours every day. When the only time you came home was when mom called you. And those days are gone. And I think we really need to support getting the children back out, getting involved in activities. And those activities can be sports, but just for they, for them to understand the importance of it and how that's going to play out to the rest of their lives. And the health issues that we now know, as you get older, almost, you know, become exponentially worse. So I think it's a big education process and I think we ought to really push it in our schools.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gooch. Mr. Newman?
Sure. I want to go back to the, to the, to the greenway piece again, because I think that, you know, I think that is-
You're going to use your minute here for the greenway?
Yeah, I did. Because, no, I think that's, I think that's in response to this question. I mean, I think creating a walkable, bikeable environment in our community is, you know, is key to this. And I think when, sometimes when we think about things like, you know, bike paths and sidewalks and greenways and public parks, I mean, they kind of come across as like, this is sort of this, oh, it'd be nice, but it's not essential. But I think it is essential. I think it is essential to give our kids a safe place to go play outside. And it's, you know, it's not safe to ride your bike down the street. And the greenways we have give people that place where you can go play. And as a parent, you don't have to worry about what's going to happen to your kid. don't have to worry about what's going to happen to your kid. And so I think these things are not kind of a frivolous nicety. I think that they are core to public health and, and just having a great community. So I think building that infrastructure is really a key part of this. And, you know, the local farms and getting kids involved in that stuff too is, is really a great opportunity as well.
All right, Mr. Gooch, we'll start with you. These are two related questions at the same time. Bit controversial recently with the county. Would you support adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the county's nondiscrimination clause? Would you support offering domestic partner benefits to county employees?
That was, apparently I was kind of misunderstood. I am against discrimination in its entirety. That is the big issue. The one problem I have is creating special groups. My question is where do we stop with this in terms of, are we going to stop discriminating against tobacco users? Are we going to stop discrim, you know, we're going to, when are we going to stop putting these lists and just all of us start kind of figuring out discrimination is wrong, and it's wrong on its face? And that's it. As far as support, I am very devout in my beliefs. The voters of state North Carolina passed the law. That is over. That was passed by the majority of the voters of North Carolina. And that is basically the role of the Buncombe County Commissioners is to uphold the law of the state of North Carolina.
You're speaking of the marriage amendment to the state constitution? Okay. Mr. Newman?
Well, I, I think the, I think the responsibility of the county commission is to make it very clear that Buncombe County is a safe, inclusive community for all the citizens and all the families in Buncombe County. And the, the passage of Amendment 1 and writing, which wrote discrimination into our state constitution, makes it all the more important that Buncombe County make it clear that while other places in Buncombe, in North Carolina may not feel like a safe, welcoming place to live, we are. And so I think that makes it all the more important that we ensure equal workplace rights for all of our public employees. That's, that's why I supported domestic partnership policy as a city council member. I will support it as a county commissioner. We owe it to our public employees that they should not be able to be fired. Right now, it is legal to fire people for, for no reason related to their job, but only because of their sexual orientation. That's, that's wrong. If you believe discrimination is wrong, let's make it a policy that says it's wrong. And, but I think it also sends an important message to everyone in the community about who we are as a community.
All right. Ms. Jones?
I do support, including in our nondiscrimination policy, the protected class of sexual orientation and gender identity. We did, there's mounds of research that tell us that those employees, if, if you're from the LGBT community, you are, you experience harassment and termination, unjust termination at a much higher rate. This is documented across the board. So hearing from the, our employees that are members of that community, they want this. And for no other reason than that, we should do it tomorrow. And I'm also supportive of the domestic partner benefits, being part of Buncombe County's personnel policy too. My reading and, and understanding of Amendment 1 is that, and actually all the propaganda for it, and I was against it, said that it would not impact the employer's ability to provide these benefits. So I would hope that we can do that in Buncombe County in the future and treat all our employees the same.
All right, thank you. Our final question, as I believe, timekeeper, we're close. The county board of education this summer utilized some schools for summer lunch programs for kids who qualify for free or reduced school lunches during the school year. Would you support the continuation of this program? Mr. Newman? And this was a federally funded program, and there was a small 200 and something dollar gap that was, that was paid for by a nonprofit.
Honestly, I'm not familiar with all the details of the program, so I'd probably just like to get more information about it before having a specific position on that.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
Absolutely. This is part of, and, and if you saw the, the meals that they were providing, they were, they were very healthy meals. And part of what I've experienced in this community is, are families that are struggling. And literally, you, you would go into their homes and there is nothing in the refrigerator. And when school ends, these family situations become dire. So obviously, there was, there was some sites that did better than others in terms of the distribution of it. I think those are the types of things that can be tweaked. But I, I really see no better use of public dollars than providing low-income children healthy meals during the summer to help them continue to learn and, and grow and become part of our, our future workforce.
Mr. Gooch?
Yeah, same premise. It's definitely a, a very key element that we can support. Basically, the, goes back to what we were talking about, is being able to learn how to eat healthy. But you got to have the food to be able to eat healthy. And I think that's one of the things that I definitely have no problem in that. I am definitely, you can call this fortunate or unfortunate, but being overseas during the, during the war, I seen some things that basically food, some kids wasn't eating unless it was us soldiers giving them our MREs. So given that, that's definitely a program that we, if it's not expanded now, we need to expand it and definitely keep that one running.
All right. I want to thank our candidates at this time. They will be, at the conclusion of this, they'll be available for furthering the discussion at the back there. Want to remind everybody, open voting, early one-stop voting rather, opens October 18th. By the way, I found these nifty cards upstairs in the library that has all the locations. You can pick one up maybe on your way out if that part's not locked. But you can go to vote411.org for all of the information. Your districts and polling locations may have changed. So please, you can again go to vote411.org for that information, or ablwv.org, Asheville-Buncombe League of Women Voters.org. Next week, on the 8th, we will have candidates from the east side, District 2 and District 115, running from Weaverville in the north to Fairview in the south for a candidate's forum. We will be at the Black Mountain Library on Doherty Street. And then on the 15th, it will be District 3 and District 116 candidates from the west side of the county. And that will be at the Skyland Volunteer Fire Department on Miller Road at the intersection of Hendersonville and Long Shoals. And the forums will be available at carolinapublicpress.org and at a later date as well at ablwv.org. I want to thank your candidates, and thank you all for taking this into your own hands. If you don't vote, no one will. Bring someone with you to the polls. Thank you.